Let me have your attention, please. The agenda of the regular monthly meeting of the City Commission of Rio Grande City. It's Wednesday, February 11th, 2015. As the record shows, it's 12:09, 12:08, make that in the afternoon. We're at 101 South Washington in beautiful downtown Rio Grande City. I've called this meeting an order. I'm going to ask Commissioner, I mean, Dr. Salinas if he'll lead us in a short invocation. And I want to ask Dave Jones to lead us in a pledge. All, please rise.
Mr. Martinez, many thanks for being here today. We ask you to bless everyone present and their families. Thank you for allowing us to represent the city. We ask you, please, help clear our minds and make the best decisions possible. Pray for the poor and the hungry, for our true home and brother, all our officials and officers. You always bless them, pray.
Major Deesens.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag and the allegiance to be Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Dr. Salinas, and thank you, Commissioner Jones. We continue this agenda, ladies and gentlemen, under General. And I ask that you please draw your attention to roll call and finding of a quorum, letter B, on this agenda. Ms. Holly, please.
Thank you.
Here.
Mayor Porche and Casa. Is absent Commissioner Salinas?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez? Is absent Commissioner Jones?
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you so much. Letter C on this agenda is under General, reads Public Forum. It's a part in this agenda where the community can come and talk to this commission about something that's pertinent, has to be something on this agenda. They have two minutes to do so. Ms. Holly, has anybody signed up for Public Forum?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. We continue the agenda. Letter D, under General, Departmental Reports. Under Departmental Report, to remind the city that we have, or the Commissioners and the Mayor, and the Mayor, I'm sorry, he's not here, but the Commissioners and Dr. Salinas, that we have several departments, obviously, Public Works, Public Utilities, we have Fire, we have Police, any of the departments, we also have a library, we have several others. But you can ask questions about any particular department that you prefer. Ms. Bayas, do we highlight any department in this meeting?
Sir, I know it's a short meeting that we have. The only thing I do want to have is Marlen run off a list of the very busy month that we have in February. It started with the Chulishodan on the 7th, and so it continues, Marlen, so will you, please?
Well, this Friday, we have the Art Walk, which is going to be here at the Lopez de Quina Courtyard. We're hoping to engage some of the businesses in downtown. So I think downtown glamour is going to be open, and then we are planning to have maybe something, some sort of musical group at Anniversary Park, highlighting Anniversary Park. So we have that going on on, on there Friday. And then on...
Saturdays.
On Saturday, we have a thematic heritage tourism event that we're doing a soft rollout for. And it's based on our heritage tourism project that we've been working on with the Texas Historical Commission. We're doing a soft rollout, and it would be this Saturday from 10:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon, and that's going to be also here at the Lopez de Quina Courtyard. And then, well, we are off on presentation. And then, we have the TML meeting on, at the, excuse me, on the 19th, in McAllen, the quarter in the evening. And then there's a Wild Eve Dinner, that's a community event put together by the Fair Association, that's the 21st. And there's also, I believe, a trail raid that morning, and the parade is also that morning, fair, the Stark County parade. And then the youth fair is, will be the following week on the 26th, which will be the 26th, 27th, and 28th. And that's what I have, kind of, for this whole month.
There's, every department has a lot of activities going on. How projects are moving forward? Feel free to ask or call any one of them, and they have a long list of everything that they're doing.
I want to say that Michael has something on the 28th.
Power Rangers.
Yes, I'm calling the Power Rangers, to Rio Grande City, original cast from the first movie that came out in the 90s. And I'll be open to the public for them to meet the Power Rangers.
Very cool. Very cool.
And the smoke alarm that's happening on the 21st, 300 homes will be furnished with a smoke alarm.
That's great. And the Fire Department, eh?
Yes.
Okay. I know we're trying to concise everything, it's a noon time meeting, so we're trying to get everybody in and out in less than an hour or so. Commissioners, do you have any questions on any departments? A lot going on for February and March and this springtime, so thank you all very much. Consent Agenda Number Two, it's three items, and I'll read them off very quickly. Approval of Departmental Travel Requests, Approval of Minutes of Previous Meetings, and Approval of EDC Action from Meeting of January 6th. Commissioners, have you all looked over Consent Agenda? Anything you all want to pull out of Consent Agenda? Any questions?
So, will Mayor approve Consent Agenda as presented?
Very good. I have a motion by Dr. Salinas to approve the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? If none, I'll entertain a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Letter Number Three, under Ordinances, Letter A, reads Second Reading of Adoption of Ordinance Number 2015-1, Adopting the 2014 Water Conservation Plan and the 2014 Drought Contingency Plan. Ms. Bayas, talk to us about some water, please.
Yes, sir. This is a bit of a house call here, where this plan was adopted last year. Well, that was not adopted, it was actually approved by the Utility Department, and we had a deadline with the TCQ to submit it. We're now going through the process of making it through an ordinance in order they can enforce some of the fines and conditions that are in the drought plan.
Okay. We've had a contingency plan, a drought plan, for some time now. Right now, I know it's been kind of wet, but when it gets really dry, we fall back on that, so it becomes a very important tool that we have in our Water Department. So Commissioners, do you have any questions on the contingency plan?
I move we approve, I agree.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Salinas to approve through ye, which is the Second Reading of the Ordinance Adopting the 2014 Conservation Plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? If none, I'll entertain a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Letter B, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2015-2, Adopting a New Rate Schedule for Solid Waste Collection Disposal Service. Ms. Bayas, some information, please.
Yes, sir. These are the new rates that became effective on October. In order to put those new rates into place with the new billing, we need to pass an ordinance. Overall, it was by 50 cents on the residential rate that it got increased.
Okay. The increase that you see is based on a contract that we have that's already established and set in place that gives the parameters for raises and for adjustments?
Every October, they look at the price index, Consumer Price Index, and adjust the rate that it will be either increased or decreased.
Where does that put, where does that put the customer for...
Right now, residential is paying $17.25, and they will now be paying $17.75.
Okay.
I was going to ask you, and I'm just, it says that the cost has already been implemented, right?
In October, they started billing.
Okay. And so what becomes effective March 1st? I was going to go to B.
The rates. We cannot adjust the rates only through ordinance. When the rates came in in October, we couldn't just go into that system and do it.
Do we have any charge on that?
No, we haven't.
But, I'm just going to recommend a couple things, Mayor. Number one, how do we notify the public that this is going to happen?
Through the RGC and 12, and through the billings, current billings.
There's no way you can be able to post it? I can, newspaper, local newspaper?
Yes, we can do that, yes.
I would recommend it.
That costs extra money, though. That's the only thing, it costs extra money.
Maybe a little brief explanation, that this is a reflection of the contract, also, the rates are based on data. It's just not an ordinance that we're creating.
I understand.
We'll get Mr. Commissioner Salinas to do the write-up on this.
With those two things, Mayor, so move.
Very good.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Salinas, and I have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? Please make a note of Mr. Salinas' recommendations to notify the public and make sure they make them aware of the rate change. With that, I go to a vote. All in favor of this item signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Four Resolutions, reads Letter A, Discussion Possible Action to Adopt Resolution Number 2015-4, Authorize Submission of a TCDBG Grant. What does that stand for?
Texas Community Development Block Grant.
Thank you very much. Texas Community Development Block Grant, Application for Street Improvement. Ms. Bayas, talk to us about some street improvements and a grant.
Yes, sir. These are the monies that the city receives from the region, down from the HUD beds, down to the state, and down to the region, South Texas Development Council. This year's 304,000. The, we had a public hearing. We basically paved all the city streets, and some of them were left out, those that did not have any type of paving on it, which Resolution Lane, Morland, and Gavilan. Resolution Lane is on Rafael subdivision, Morland is along Chaco Blanco, and Gavilan is in the Arroyo, El Arroyo area. This will be brand-new streets. Right now, if you go through them, it's, they're just, they're caliche.
The, keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, that this money has to be for new streets. It cannot be used for resurfacing. That's something we faced every single time. That's why we paved the streets the way we did, we resurfaced them. So this is for the construction of brand-new streets. Lucian Lane is out towards Fairground Road. Morland is where?
Off the Chaco Blanco.
Lucio Blanco Blanco, I'm reading now. And Gavilan is over here, I guess in El Arroyo?
Yes, sir. Yes, on the other side of El Arroyo.
And we have 304,000, and I believe all the estimates that we have here is 283?
Three, on the bottom left.
327?
327, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. If it's, well, we can't really pave any very large amount of streets anymore for $300,000, so if you look at the linear feet, you know, Lucian Lane is the longest one at 1240, the other one is 580 linear feet, the other one is 563. So we're doing small streets because the amount of money doesn't allow us to do any kind of major construction of any kind.
So is items to apply for that being approved?
Yes, sir.
It's, yeah.
The application is due on the 27th of this month.
We don't have any plans on trying to pave the subdivision across the El Arroyo, on the right-hand side of...
The Brisas?
The Brisas, yeah, subdivision. We don't have any plans on fixing those roads.
Not through a grant, because like the mayor mentioned, those would be like an overlay, like what was done with the bond paving. I know Fernandez is looking at an estimate to see how much it would be. It appears that only the entrance, the rest of the streets have pretty good drainage, so they're, you know, they're doing well. Maybe try to get the crack filler in there.
The, this money is, the block grant that we use this money from, Mr. Jones, can only be used for new streets. You can't resurface, you can't, you can't upgrade any streets. They have to be a street that really isn't, doesn't exist, it has to be there in a very, very poor street that you're going to completely turn over and redo, or construct a new street that is previously caliche or gravel or dirt.
It also requires that the street means the 51% low to moderate income.
That also, yeah.
Yeah, that's a big threshold, we talked about it. The money has to be used in, I guess, in housing areas that are in greater need, and in here, mod and moderate to upper scale, the block grants cannot be used for those type of, those areas. Has to be used for the more needy areas.
I'm guessing that these four streets named here, Mayor, are divided into the three or four, that's where we came up with the four streets? That's our plan, in case we do get, like, another word of the cost to...
Well, we'll get it. It's one of those things that's given to us. Remember the money that we go every two years and we get as a part of the block grant that we're in? So the money's going to be allotted to us.
It's original allocation, it's divided by nine entities this year. One of the entities was unable to participate, otherwise it would have been at 273,000. But because they weren't unable, we, it jumped up to 304. It used to be 800,000 that we would get, and now it's just really gone down.
I think it was even a million at one point, once upon a time.
The reason these streets were chosen is because of the low to mod criteria, and because they have no type of improvements, they're caliche. We did look at another one, but it was over 1,000 feet, and it is wide, it would really throw us over the budget.
Right. And that's what I was saying, that with these four, that budget into there for sure, we're good?
Yes, sir. Yes.
It's actually kind of a trick, finding the right streets that fit the amount of money, without going too far over.
Because I used to say one through four, and then we miscalculated, and now we're one, two, three, we lose somebody out.
Yeah.
Well, you take that not to measure. Yes.
So move.
Very good. I have a motion by Dr. Salinas, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? Normal discussion, I'll go to a vote. All in favor of this item signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We go to Letter B, under Four. It reads Discussion Possible Action to Adopt Resolution Number 2015-5, Authorizes Submission of An Application, Texas Parks and Wildlife Local Park Grant Program for the South Ford Dice Hike/Bike Birding Trails Project. Ms. Bayas, some information on some hike/bike birding trails.
Mayor, the South Ford Dice Trails have started to get a lot of attention, and we'll say that the parks are right, kept it real well. We have some great partnerships with several state birding sites, state naturalists that are assisting us. This is a trails project that would help us put the educational signage, that will help us put the restroom facilities eventually for it to become a nature center. We are looking at submitting an application for it to be a state birding site. We are actually going to be having a bird migration celebration on March 28th with guided tours by the state naturalists, and activities, and prices for how many birds are spotted in that area.
There you go.
The grant is for 200,000 grant funds and 133 in ink kind with the material and local labor. We are looking besides the building with the restrooms, facilities, and the educational signage. There are some areas of the trails that are that clay type of soil, so it kind of gets hard course with the people to walk through, so we're going to be resurfacing that with caliche. We're also doing the infrastructure to do a primitive RV park where we can have and host people that come all the way from Canada, and sometimes from overseas in England, that they're searching for a particular bird or species of plant, and that have been identified in this area. So all in all, this is a grant, we're hoping that in our trip to Austin next week, that we can make sure that we have the necessary points to get it funded.
We were recently successful also in, with Texas Parks and Wildlife, we had a grant of $75,000.
Yes, sir.
That we also acquired through some visits, so we're going to be back up there on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, so, you know, we, the prospects are there, and let's just hope that we can find some funding for this project.
I have two little questions, there, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
100,000, is it fair to say that you'd add the 133, so it would be a total project of 333?
628.
Okay. How much of that is cash match or in ink kind, the 133?
If you notice throughout the, the actual, when you look at caliche, we normally have caliche source, and we are not the labor put it in. We didn't provide a breakdown, it wasn't required for the grant, as they keep on looking for, to fund this, they asked for the breakdown. The restroom is, is a small, it's not a fancy building or anything, it's just the facilities and bike rack to either repair their bike chain or a flat tire, water hose to hose it out. So a lot of this can be done through local labor. We're not hoping to take up any actual cash match. If anything, it would be to maybe buy some additional caliche.
Very good. Thank you very much. I have a motion by Dr. Salinas, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion on this item? If none, I'll go to a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number Four, C, Discussion Possible Action to Adopt Resolution Number 2015-6, Authorizes Submission of a 2016 DJ Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division. Ms. Bayas, tell us something a little bit about this, please.
This is, this would be the second year that we apply for this one. I know that we have an officer now working. This is for drug and human trafficking prevention along the area. This is a criminal justice division, actually coming from federal funds from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. And I think we're looking for an amount of the same, 45,000?
We're actually going to try to see if we can apply for 12,002 units with this grant. So if that comes, you know, what have you been more, do we have it versus a...
Is the, this is Office of the Governor, is it under the Governor's Office, or is it under the Department of Justice?
I think it's the Governor's Office.
The Governor's Office?
Yeah.
Okay.
So CJD, Criminal Justice Division?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, what is it? Motion by Dr. Salinas, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? If none, I go to a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Letter D, Discussion Possible Action to Adopt Resolution 2015-7, in Support of the Big Sky Plains LP, Application for Housing Tax Credits, Tax Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Ms. Bayas, tell us something about a Big Sky Plains.
Big Sky Plains is, Plains is a development that will be constructing 80 units. We recently had approved for a different developer to do this on the corner of Chaco Blanco and Eisenhower. If you all remember, last year we got funded two sides for affordable housing. It appears that the other developer couldn't come through with some of the investments, so that fell through, unfortunately. But Mr. Mark Temple is here, again, trying to get us another set of affordable housing units here. And there is no match or component from the city that goes towards here. I think last time what we approved was waiving us a construction permit.
We went through this last year with a couple of developments. Mark Temple, who is always courteous, polite, but I didn't expect to see him because I thought we had taken care of that business, and I suppose that bridge needs to get crossed one more time, Mr. Temple. I haven't met with him at length about this project, but I was going to guess that it's identical to the previous one, except probably just different names and different financing sort of resources.
Everything is similar, same location, 80 units, unit mix will be the same. Basically, the only thing that has changed is we were to have a different development partner involved on this. Takehouse Housing out of Boston have done substantial amount of tax credit projects, impact suits, and felt like we'll be able to finish it out this time. And we'll try to do something different next time.
I know, I'm just laughing a little bit, because I thought we'd, I thought we'd kind of baked this bread already, and I guess we haven't, it's, uh...
It's very disappointing from our standpoint, because we were, basically, everything was ready to go, and it was just some issues that arose with the development partner that...
That happens, that's business.
...wouldn't be able to handle.
This is similar to the Casa Linda, that's across from, next to General Sanchez. Yes, sir.
I guess we're going to be seeing you for a while, then.
Right.
Yes, sir. Very good. Commissioners, what are your wishes on this particular item?
So move.
I have a motion by Dr. Salinas, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? With no more discussion, I'll go to a vote. All in favor of this item signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Letter E, reads Discussion Possible Action to Adopt Resolution 2015-8, Confirming the Resale of Certain Properties Acquired Through Previous Tax Foreclosure Proceedings. Ms. Bayas, tell us something about some tax proceedings, ma'am.
Yes, sir. As you know, we've been trying to get our residential project off the ground, and we're needing to acquire the property for whatever reasons these facilities have been in place for the longest time. As we have moved to acquire the property, working with Mr. Gus Martinez, it had already been auctioned.
Correct.
And there was no, no buyer. So we're basically doing a resale, but he also brought in some other property, and I'll let him go ahead and explain this.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, honourable Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, we had one property at a resale that we got a bid for. It's Lot 19, Lot 13, town of Rio Grande City. We had a bid in excess of, with the phrase that it's less than what they owe in taxes, but when it comes to the city to approve it, I recommend that you do this, it would degrade value and I doubt that we are good. The second one, of course, is the one that the city itself put a bid upon, and there's no action on that one. I'm just here to inform you that we're coming up to Stark County on Monday the 23rd, SEC on the 24th, and remember, CDCI, the Department of Public March for their approvals. I'll recommend approval because it is in excess of what is the phrase that it will offer. First we need an action, the second one's just information.
So the motion should read, what's action and what...
It would be, from the resale of the property, and then it would be Lot 9, Lot 13, for the amount suggested.
What's the amount, by the way?
The amount that was bid upon that one lot.
And this for people's reference, it's here downtown, right?
It's, correct.
The barber shop.
The old barber shop that used to be about two blocks away?
Until the other day.
The bid was $25,000, and the current free value is $2,000. So it's in excess of, I think they owe 38 taxes, but there was no way that we're ready to down this money. It's only a phrase.
May I just clarify, you're saying Lot 19, but our people says Lot 9.
I'm sorry, Lot 9, you're correct.
This, okay.
And not stated in those questions.
Can you just, let me get this wording correctly, so then, the one is just a ratify, I suppose, or, because I thought we were going to talk about our water property, she also, our property on, what is it, the Blue Mine?
It's on Garcia's, because Garcia's there for only three and having three meat. On that portion, since where the woods doing the bid, that is, that is an extension for resale.
They told you to mention.
Yes, this information, and how it's broken down, the 20,000 that we made the bid on. And those 20,000 are part of the project budget, it's one of them, a board. The action you need is on Lot 9, Lot 13, with that resale.
Again, it's, the old barber shop used to be here halfway down the block, a lot to it here. Yeah, it got torn down some time back.
And will we approve the resolution 2015-8? Is that covered?
That is to resell a property. Because the resolution, we have to resell whole property, so we need to just...
We can, doesn't it just have that first one, because the second one you need to approve if it's a work of the nature, the bid on it, it's a routine of money.
Just can't, we all have this.
Yes, I'm sorry, I called it, I'm going to say, doesn't it pay taxes to you, or do you know, see?
So Mayor, the motion is to approve the first lot.
Okay.
Lot 9?
Lot 9, Lot 13.
Lot 9, Lot 13?
Correct.
Lot 9, Lot 13.
I move that we take action to approve Lot 9, Lot 13. Does require the signing of a resolution, though.
Okay.
So the resolution will be, to adopt a resolution to probably resell on Lot 9, Lot 13?
Yes, sir.
Are you sure, Mr. Martinez? I don't want to make this right. I don't want to see, I don't want to be like Mark Temple, see you back here again, something that...
I'll send the resolution to your secretary, with that first one, Lot 9, Lot 13.
Okay, very good.
I'll go second, then.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Salinas, I have a second by Commissioner Jones. Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Salinas, I have a second by Commissioner Jones, any more discussion on this item whatsoever? Is everybody clear? Okay, good. Uh, let me go to a vote, all in favor, this item signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Martinez, appreciate it.
Mr. Martinez, you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, City Manager's Report, letter A, presentation of the annual River Grande City Police Department Racial Profiling Report, I'm gonna have our Chief Castillo talk about racial profiling, go ahead, sir.
Uh, yes, uh, we have to present the, the report that Commissioner Uy receives from you, and so basically, the, uh, non-traffic stops and citations in the mornings, and then broken down by, just to, uh, um, traffic stop, so it's just for the Commissioner Uy, and what they're doing with, uh, traffic stops, how they're being broken down and stuff, so, it's just, if you have any question?
Not a question to the report, but I was gonna, uh, mention that, uh, you know, Chief Castillo's been on the job for a while now, but, uh, some of the more pertinent issues now that have come up because of statewide, uh, issues regarding border security, I, uh, you know, I talk to the chief very often, and we, uh, talk about information that comes out because of Operation Strong Safety and whatnot, and he gave me some information yesterday, I felt, I felt was very, uh, impressive, actually. Uh, January of fourteen, we had confiscated under, we had seized under the city of River Grande City of PD, uh, with our HIDA, uh, seven thousand, seven hundred and something odd pounds of, of marihuana, just as, as a figure, and twenty fifteen, January of this year, that number is six hundred and ninety-five pounds, something like that?
January.
So, the face of crime and such is changing for some reason, so, uh, I'm glad that you'll be able to adjust to those changes, chief, so I thank you for that, so, uh, anything else you wanna talk about?
I have any more with, uh, keeping ties with San Juan, and really to, and even, uh, really in, uh, the, being part of a regional, uh, to, this is responsible, which is that a schlocky, so that's in the talks for tomorrow, and see how you can bring that over, and we'll, uh, this is granted also, and if you can get into that, they'll, uh, provide training, and then, you know, so we, so, you know, that'll be coming up, uh, a little later, soon, we can all, as you know, as soon as, but that is, uh, well, I got some that's coming up.
Uh, is this, this is a presentation only, yes?
No, actually, sir.
Uh, any, any questions, anybody? Okay, uh, thank you very much, appreciate it, thanks so much. Uh, next item we have, under City Manager's Report, discussion possible action to declare certain equipment as surplus, Ms. Bayes, tell us about surplus equipment.
Yes, sir, uh, the police department opened a new evidence room, and, uh, it's been working very well, you know, they've been able to catalog, uh, catalog all the evidence, and that is in the, the room that was, or that is behind the plant department, on top of the city secretary's office. And cleaning out, they come across a lot of, you know, items that were no longer in use or needed, and you have a, a list here, and so those need to go out for auction, and some vehicles also.
I have a motion by Dr. Salinas, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any more discussion? With none, I go to a vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, did I get everything on the agenda, Ms. Holling? I did? Uh, executive session, do we have anything?
Nothing, ma'am.
Very good, um, ladies and gentlemen, uh, Mr. Salinas, any announcements?
Uh, just like to thank all the department heads, appreciate all your hard work, uh, you guys are in the city, make our job a lot easier, so thank you, I really appreciate your day-to-day operations, and, uh, thank the employees that are under you also, for doing a wonderful job, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, uh, Commissioner Jones?
Uh, straight up my mind up, uh, basically, I'd like to just, uh, thank the city commission and, uh, employees here for continuing to support, you know, working together as one, and, uh, continue to move River Grande City forward. And lastly, uh, I know Mr. Ramirez not here, but, uh, I know I wanna congratulate the freshman girls basketball team, I think they, they, uh, they won district, so I wanted to congratulate them for, for doing a great job, that basically.
I, maybe also, on that note, I think our wrestling team did quite well, I'm not too sure, I think Brujas did, and River Grande City did.
Uh, wrestling team, yeah.
I, I, I just see what I read, but I, I think they did quite well, so I wanna congratulate the wrestling team.
Mariachis as well?
The mariachis also?
Oh, the mariachi, that's true.
Mariachis also, I, I don't, they won a competition, came in first place in a competition?
This is their, their animal?
Okay. They, they champs, very good, so, I remember that. Uh, we have art walk coming up, we have.
And we have the Vida program also.
We have the Vida, uh, three.
My data, the menu, I want to see.
The Vida program, uh, we have the fair coming up, we have a lot of activity coming up for the spring, so I, I could thank everybody for their help, and every day that goes by, we kind of progress a little bit forward. And we have Ruben Clyde here, who takes care of all our water needs, he addressed some issues re- recently with some state publications, that Tribune was here, and he took him on a very, very thorough, uh, tour of, of a water facility, and one thing they, they often think, they think because systems on the, the river grand are, are precarious, but I always tell them that we have probably one of the most sound water systems that the entire valley has, so I wanna thank you for that. But with that, ladies and gentlemen, I don't have any more announcements, aside from just telling, uh, the commissioners, thank you, I know it's, it's a burden, because we're at lunchtime, I promised you a thirty-minute meeting, and I think I said twenty minutes, so I'm a little, ten minutes off, but thank you so much for here, Commissioner Salinas, Commissioner Jones, thank you for being here, uh, and that, and that, I need a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by, uh, Dr. Salinas, I have a second by Commissioner Jones, uh, motion to adjourn, all in favor, uh, signify by saying aye. Aye. Ms. Holling, the record show that it is twelve forty-two in the afternoon, and this meeting of city commissions adjourned, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.